Good start. Good afternoon and welcome to this meeting of the Committee of the Communities, Parks and Leisure Policy Group. The meeting is open to the public, it's also being webcast today, but we've had no petitions and no questions from the public. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no planned fire test today, so if the alarm goes off, please take instructions from the town hall staff, assembly point at Tudor Square. I would now like to ask each member here and officers to introduce themselves, and I shall start with myself. I'm Richard Williams, I'm the Chair of this committee and I'm a member for Stanington Ward.
Yes, I'm Bernard Dittle, councillor for Walkley.
Sue Alston, councillor for Fullwood Ward.
Tim Huggan, councillor for Crooks and Crosspool Ward.
Dawn Shaw, Director of Communities.
And Ruth Bell, Head of Parks and Countryside.
From Osborne Ward.
Karen McGowan, councillor for Burleigh Ward.
Marian Elliott, Green councillor for Gleders Valley.
Thank you. We have one apology, councillor Alan Hooper and his substitute is councillor Tim Huggan. Item three is exclusion of the public and press. There is a closed part of the report at item nine in the agenda which is not available to the public and press because it contains exempt information described in paragraph three of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act of 1972, as amended, relating to financial and business affairs. The Committee are therefore asked to formally exclude the public and press for discussions on this item to allow for consideration of the sensitive information. Declarations of interest. Does anybody have a declaration of interest on this agenda today? That's a negative, thank you. We shall now have the minutes of the last meeting which was held on the 20th of September 2022. I'll take them page by page. If you want to make any comments or amendments, please signal, thank you. Page one, which is actually page nine, page 10, page 11, page 12, page 13, page 14, page 15, page 16, page 17, and finally page 18. Those are actually minutes of the November meeting, not September one. Item six is public questions and petitions, and as previously noted, we have no petitions or questions from members of the public today. Item seven is the work programme, which is page 19 of the agenda.
Good afternoon, members. If you could just leave to page 19, which starts to set out the work programme. Overleaf on page 20, we've got a set of recommendations that we'd be asking you to agree, please. On page 21, in section 2.2, you can see some training and skills development which has been outlined, and that will continue to be added to as we work through the year. Moving on to page 22, we've got Appendix 1 of the work programme which highlights proposed additions and amendments to the work programme since the last meeting in November. And then from part two onwards, moving on to Appendix 3, on page 23, we've got the future work programme set out. You might be able to see that the future meetings do come to a bit of an abrupt end on there, but future meetings are being worked up in the calendar as we speak, so they will be added to as we get some further date confirmations through. Okay. So I'll pass back to you, Chair, to get those recommendations agreed, if that's okay. Thank you.
Are we happy to take... Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Can I just ask, I'd really like to go on the library visit, so I think I said it last time, if we can just have some consultation about dates, that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
As I understand it, Lesley Dyson has sent out emails. If you haven't received them, could you let me know? Because we are very keen to make sure that... You've had nothing yet? Okay. Okay, I'll speak to Lesley and get that. But we are very keen to offer a couple of dates, because I know last time you couldn't make it on a specific day, because it's really interesting to see the various libraries. Thank you. So are you happy to take that work programme recommendation? Yeah, thank you very much. Item eight is about the video called, entitled Be That Mate. Some of you may have seen it in the interval at full council last week. I was very moved by it, and I thought it needed a bit more just being shown over a cup of coffee. And so I've asked Chelsea Benahan and the team who created it to come and talk about what they're trying to achieve, we'll see the video, and then hopefully some questions and comments. So please come forward. It's really nice to see you here today. I'm looking forward to getting a better understanding of what you were trying to achieve. As an aside to start, I showed it to my daughter, and I was particularly hit by the bit about the women having to pretend to be on the phone to give themselves a sense of security. And I asked her, do you do that? And she said yes, frequently. So it really resonated with me. So over to you, Chelsea.
Good afternoon, and again, thank you for offering our young residents the opportunity to come and speak to you and share their work and help us all understand why they need to be around the table and why it's important for us to listen. So I think that's the first point. I'm not going to take away the young people explaining their journey of how they got to this point, so I'm just going to presee what it is we're trying to achieve with our young people and our young residents in having a say across the city, and how they got to this point, and where the group came from. And then I'll lead on to our own young residents to introduce themselves and their work, if that's okay. So in short, what we're trying to achieve within Community Youth Services and what we want to share with our partners is, the phrase 'young residents' is to bring that notion of young people having an equal and active voice in their communities, and sharing conversations and being part of mutual conversations that help create and enable social change within their communities, within the environments that they're part of, whether that's education or whether that's their friendship groups, or in this case, looking at the rights of young women in some of the scenarios that are highlighted in the video. And also giving them the opportunity to, and the empowerment and the encouragement, to not just participate in youth voices, we might know it, and if, for want of a better phrase, the typical youth voice, but actually have the confidence and the empowerment to bring difficult conversations to the table and to challenge us as adults and also themselves as peers, to find solutions to the things that are going on in their lives and to give us a better understanding of what their world in our communities looks like and how we can not just support them to find solutions, but actually what's going well, be part of that experience and to share that experience. So we're coming together. We've had some incredible engagement with young people over the last year, engagement that Community Youth Services in particular, our Youth Voice Involvement Service are very proud of. The young people that are here today, our young residents that are here today, they are part of two groups. One is an information advice, tell me if I've got this right, information advice and guidance group for the police? Yep. So they work with South Yorkshire Police, and we help facilitate that with South Yorkshire Police, and also Sheffield Youth Cabinet. And they had a conference or an event where safety came up, that was shared not just... The really important message is this was shared not just by young women, this was an observation experience shared by their male peers and counterparts as well, and they had, they shared these concerns, and they have also been part of the development of this film, in its editing and in its advocacy. And then as the youth cabinet was elected and during an event, a residential introductory event, they came together to develop a programme and an ideas, and I think I'll stop there and allow you, you pair, to introduce yourselves and to...
My name is Samea, and I'm part of the Police Advisory Group, and this whole project, this whole movement is bigger than anyone in this building, anyone in this world, and it's something that myself and my friend here and many of us are passionate about. And when we came together to see what's going on, the biggest issue that's occurring everywhere in the UK, everywhere in the world, is sexual harassment, and it's a big factor that affects young people to live their day-to-day lives and to live a normal life with equality and to feel safe. And the reason why we came up with doing a film is to provide a foundational view of the information on what's happening and for people to understand that this is happening across all different forms, for males, females, transgender, non-binary, every single form. And it's important that we get that message across through all institutions like schools, nurseries, and through universities, because it's something that's not just a small campaign, but it's going to happen, it's something that's been happening for years and years and years, and it's something that we were passionate about, because if we start something now, then it will can lead on to something greater, and maybe even just a small impact will just make a huge difference, which is why we think it's so important that we get this message across and to know it's more than just a film, but it's a whole movement. There's support there, there's, you're not alone when you go out in the street, this is wrong. And if we socialise children from a young age into knowing what this is, it will have a big impact on society in the future, which is why we think it's really important to handle this big issue of sexual harassment, because it does prevent people doing those, going over those hurdles in life because they don't feel safe and because things are not understood or brushed off, and which is why we think it's important to introduce to everyone and to show that it's just more than what we think it is. I'm going to pass on to my friend.
So, sorry for the cold. I'm Rosie, I'm on the Sheffield Youth Cabinet and I'm on the Police Advisory Group. We started this project in the summer of 2022. We started with meetings, trying to talk about the issues that we face and what to discuss with the police, and a main one that came up in a group of mixed genders was sexual harassment, of girls coming forward telling these stories, of guys coming forward telling their sisters' stories or their girlfriends' stories, saying this is an issue on our streets. We slowly progressed these meetings and got in touch with a small film company where we made a script on what we wanted. Those were, the script mainly came up with 10 points and how men should be treating women, how women try and protect themselves, and that this is, women shouldn't have to do that on our streets, and men shouldn't be sexually harassing on our streets, and that our young girls shouldn't have to fake a phone call whilst they walk home. Slowly progressing from the script, we had photos of us taken, and then that was used in this short film. And these are us in that group, us of probably 10 individuals, probably more than that. And most of us had experienced sexual harassment. This is a true story from us and many girls out there. This resource, this short film, we want to be used in schools, and we want to be used with lesson plans and with resources to build on it, so it doesn't just come and go, this stays with us. We stop this issue, and we try and educate our young people and try and show that they are supported. I don't want to see any more of my friends come to me saying that a weird man followed them home, or that they got touched inappropriately when they didn't ask for it. It's a serious issue that our young people shouldn't have to face, and we want this short film in schools and to be progressed, and it is so important to us and so important to so many other people.
Thank you very much, both of you. Shall we see the video?
We're a bunch of teenagers. Monira. Lisa. Ellie. Roz. Eden. Daisy. Nazara. Yalena. Neve. Zara. Samea. And Liv. This film is for you, for men and boys like you. We love the way that you're funny, enthusiastic, protective, supportive and caring. We love all that, but let's face it, sometimes some of you are absolute idiots. Here's 10 things to understand. Number one. Everyone, everywhere, should be able to go where they want at any time of day, wearing what they want without being harassed. If you can, why can't we? Number two. In this room are 23 teenagers. When asked if they had been shouted at by men whilst walking home in school uniform, 21 of them said yes. Yes! Some of us are 12, pack it in. Number three. In this room there are 23 teenagers. When asked if they had been grouped or physically assaulted by men, 17 of them said yes. One 15-year-old has been cornered by two vans and had to jump over a wall to escape. Ask yourself, where is this all heading? Are you okay with it? Number four. Here are three different people you don't want to be. The perp, the egger-on, the do-nothing. Now, if you're one of these men, pause, reflect, look in the mirror. If you're the perp, you need to know that sexual harassment that can include repetitive catcalling is illegal. If you are the egger-on, ease off and think about the damage you're doing. If you're the do-nothing, speak up, just move things along and get your mates leaves alone. There are all sorts of ways you can check the behaviour of your mates before it's too late. Number five. Here are some of the things that we're having to do that most fads don't. Plan our route, go in pairs, keep to roller areas, pretend to be on a call with our dads, text on arrival, keep our mouths shut so you don't get called bossy, change how we dress, keep our heads down, feel frightened and anxious when we go out, make ourselves invisible, make ourselves small, hide the light we have just to get by. Number six. That girl in the street is not just a face and a body, she is a person. Your mum has been her, your girlfriend has been her, your auntie, your sister, the woman you chat to at work, the girl you sit next to at school, we are her. Number seven. This starts young. Boys will be boys. If he hits you, he likes you, just ignore him. If you let it go when he is eight years old, then how will he know not to do it when he is 20? Tackle inappropriate behaviour towards girls early. Stopping the little things will stop the big things too. Number eight. We're not saying you can never make a joke, we're not saying you can never ask us out or pay us a compliment, we're saying pick up on the social cues. It's quite easy to tell if someone's not interested. If you make a mistake, just say sorry and move on. Jokes and compliments are only funny and kind when the person they're in doubt wants them. Number nine. This is a problem for boys and men. We can put you in the right direction, but in the end, you will have to actually wake up, take the step and do better. We need you to do something about it, you have to get involved. Number 10. If you know someone who's been cackled and this causes them to be harassed, and if they've been assaulted, then support them in reporting it. Harassment and assault are illegal, they're crimes that can't be stopped if the police don't know about them. Don't just tell them to report it, sit with them while they make the call, go to someone you trust with them, help them. The do-nothing becomes the egger-on, the egger-on becomes the catcaller, the catcaller becomes the harasser, the harasser becomes the assaulter, the assaulter becomes the rapist, the rapist becomes the killer. Keep what we have said in your heart and in your head. This is happening to us and you can help, you can change. Think of how free we would be if people were decent to each other. Think what we all stand to lose if nothing is done.
The more I see it, the more moving it is, it's great. Questions or comments? Kate, Karen, sorry.
I get Kate all the time, so don't worry. That's the third time I've seen that, and it's absolutely amazing, and I love it every time. It just, more and more, you spot little bits that I didn't spot the first time round. So thank you so much for what you've done, it's amazing. I'm Chair of South East Likes, I've already fed it through to, we've got a subgroup working with the South East League of Parliament, so I've already fed it through to them and said, will you talk about how we can take this forward? I'd like to play it at our public meeting as well, because like you say, it's not just about young girls, boys, it's men as well, so let's get the message out there higher up. One thing I do want to ask, my question is, you talked a lot about, you know, making an impact, and how are you going to measure that success and impact? How will you know that it's been successful?
So you may not necessarily see it straight away. I do know students who've seen it in schools, often male friends coming and talking about it, and that small bit of social change, where you're having young guys realising certain actions aren't okay, that is all the change that, like, we need in society. That is, we may not be able to measure it exactly, but if we have small things like that where people's ideas are changing, and you start that snowball effect where people are realising on small scales in schools that this isn't right, maybe talking about it and talking to their mates, that change is good enough for me, I don't necessarily need a poll showing how many opinions have been changed, but that small amount of thing, that is brilliant.
In terms of, sorry, Richard, in terms of the actual service, I think it's clear to most people in the city at the moment, we've gone through a lot of change in Community Youth Services. One of the things we're working on after Christmas is how we measure each of our services and the impact of what it is we're doing, and working with other organisations to do that, not per se this film, but the work that our Youth Voice and Influence work as are doing is part of that process. So we will be able to look at the determination, the bravery, the courage, the voice young people are bringing to the table, and how that's enabling social change.
Thank you. Thank you again, this is the third time I've seen the film, and it's very moving and very impactful, and I do think it should be seen by, you know, across the city. It would be good to see it in doctor surgeries, at places like Meadow Hall, Crystal Peaks, on the big screens, I think it would make a big influence there. I hope that can be done. So my questions are, one of the things that hit me is the pickup on social cues. Do you think that in schools we are taught about social cues sufficiently, or are we taught at all?
I think it's all down to, like, primary socialisation in terms of what are we brought up to know, because what we learn in our primary socialisation affects our secondary socialisation. So for people to understand, okay, this is wrong, you can't touch someone like this, and if that is socialising to people from a young age, they're able to learn their reactions and almost become automatic, and you can't blame people if they don't understand certain social cues. People come from different cultural backgrounds, different, some people have disabilities, for example autistic people cannot understand it, like, you have so many different factors that come into place, but to have a foundational understanding, okay, this is wrong, this is not wrong, it will reduce the amount of sexual harassment occurs in the UK and especially all across the world if this is, like, spread around properly. But it all starts from a young age, and even when from an older age, if you pass that message around, it's not saying you're wrong, you're going to go to jail for this, it's to show, it's just to have a bigger impact, because it's more than the individual itself, it's everyone around you.
We are social animals as humans, and tribalism is part of the, you know, we join a tribe when we're at police schools, it were, at, you know, infant school, primary school, further on, and we're always moving from one tribe to another. This is why I'm very keen on seeing social cues learnt by everybody so that when we move on to another part of our lives, those, what we've learnt in one can be applied to the other. I would very much like to see the schools, school heads and yourselves come into meetings like this and discuss with the schools about how they're going to take this forward, because it's got to be, you know, it's got to be embedded in school culture, and so that you have the confidence to go further in your lives and make it happen. So would that be possible? Because I'm just aware that with, now we've got academies in the city, it's very difficult to connect, get that connection between the council and schools, which we, in the past we've seen as a continuity, as it were, so that's been broken, so I think some thought needs to be going into that. The other thing I'd like to say is, we're a parks committee, I just wonder, I'd like to get some feedback from people, from young people who are in parks, to say, you know, whether you feel safe in those parks, how you think it might make things safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernard. One thought I had as you were speaking, that maybe with the educational list, is to invite them to lack meetings and to discuss this issue, I think maybe not more appropriate, but perhaps more practical. So I'll see if we can set that up.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good video, it is good, moving on, because I remember my mum was one of the first women allowed into the horse racing industry and the sexual abuse and harassment she had during those first years moving forward, and how things have appeared to have moved on. But one of the things that I'm picking up is on educating at an early age and making sure that how we're going to work, as Bernard touched on with academies, but the thing is, is I think, you know, in terms of how you're going to try and embed behaviour, and it is taking our, particularly boys, into smaller groups, not teaching a class where they can all laugh and jape about what's being said, potentially in the class context, and how are we going to get into that educational context? And then so it's sort of saying, this is the start, how do we move on from there? And have you got ideas on how you would want that to progress so that we could make sure that we embed behaviour and good behaviour and appropriate behaviour from an early age and bring it up through the system? That's the thing that are really interesting, what your thoughts are on that.
So if you think about systems being in place when it comes to bullying, at a young age, children are explained what is polite and what is rude and what is not acceptable. And when you go older and grown up and adult, you understand what is acceptable to say to other people, because when you're younger, you're told you can't call kids names, you have the strict bullying policies on what you can and cannot do to kids. If you have something to do with sexual harassment within those policies and systems in schools, then that goes and develops as well. We have, in society, we understand what is rude, and when you walk past someone, you don't just say something that's rude about their appearance, let's say, because you understand from a young age, because of bullying and your teacher saying you can't pick on someone else, you understand that's not acceptable. If you have systems in place for that, where you're calling out kids when they're doing a behaviour that isn't acceptable, that would be considered sexual harassment, that will slowly develop in a similar way where bullying prevents rude behaviour later on, there are probably, like, better ideas than mine on being able to do this, but that is one way you could look at it.
Thanks, they're very good ideas, because one of the things I was thinking is whether from the other side as well, from the Sheffield City Council side, whether, you know, with academyisation and that sort of thing is, you know, I'm one of those ones who's sort of fairly ambivalent about, you know, charter markets and schools have to show that they have got programmes in place, and have we got anything prepared for that so that we can see, and schools, not shamed into it, but it's something that they strive to achieve, that they've got a good programme in place for making sure that around this type of behaviour and how they, and how it improves, and that, and then somehow we have, as we've said, how do we measure that, and what sort of metrics, what do we ask, have we got plans for that?
So within Community Youth Services, we have, we are now redeveloping our strategy, we've come through our change process and we're redeveloping our strategy to reassert what it is we're trying to achieve. One of the key, one of the most important things we want to adopt is there is a national youth work curriculum, and it's emphasising informal education that doesn't just complement formal education, but essentially tag teams alongside it, so it's applying those skills that we want young people to know, those life skills that we want young people to know, and how we can support them in their communities, irrespective and universally of how they take part in their communities, using and applying that informal learning. That is the point of youth work, youth engagement, is to support that additional learning, that life learning alongside what takes place in schools. With that, we also have a formal element of Community Youth Services, and again, not with, not leaving... With that, we also have a formal element of community services, and again, not with, not, not, not leaving, um, leaving the message out of our voluntary and community sectors as well and the partnerships we have with them and how they engage. Um, we have a prevention service that works in a more targeted role with young people. Again, using an informal, um, early help, if you like, engagement with young people. And we work exceptionally close with schools in that, in that space, um, where there is that extra support needed. Um, so what we're, what we're doing formally as a provider is, is making sure that informal education process and that building relationships, building, um, support networks with trusted adults, a safe space where you can explore these issues and these concerns, and as we said at the very beginning, feel confident and empowered enough to bring the difficult questions, the difficult conversations equally and mutually to both adults and peers, is what we're trying to establish and a culture that we're trying to establish across the city, not just within the city council.
Sue.
Thanks. Just, just a very brief point really, but firstly, thank, thank you for bringing the, the film and, and for all the work you've put in on it. Um, it strikes me that what we're trying to do, what we want to do is try and get this message out to a big audience. And I just wondered whether any thought had been given to, um, getting it to sports clubs. And I mean that big and little, you know, whether we're talking about professional football clubs, whether they've got lots of opportunities to show videos and stuff, or even our own sports venues where we have, you know, youth groups, youth clubs playing, uh, and whether we could actually use our big sporting bodies to try and promote the film, if you like.
So this has, um, gone to all partners, including the partners we have within the sports sector. Um, one of our football clubs does the Empower Hair Programme, um, that is delivered by UK Youth. It's a national programme focused on young women, and I know that they're, um, really responsive to what's been put across. It's been shared on social media accounts, which then means it's been reshared nationally to national contacts, and we are track, tracking them. Um, we have had some feedback from national contacts, again, similar to how Richard introduced, or how you all introduced your reflections of the video. Um, we've, um, one of our young people who helped create, um, the film has been interviewed on BBC Radio Five, um, with Naga Monchetti, um, about why it was, um, produced, and I think a local radio station as well. Um, so we're slowly getting that, that, that highlight out there, but it is with the, it is with the community and programmes of the football clubs that we have in the city.
I've got two more people. I'll take Mary Anne first and then yourself.
Hi, just a supportive comment really, not a question. And that's the first time I've seen that film. So actually, I couldn't say anything straight away because it's really quite emotional. It's really powerful. Um, thanks for making it. I share your hope that something small now will build and grow in momentum. And what's really sad is that children actually understand this issue, I think, more than a lot of adults do. So thank you. Um, I mean, I've got two male children myself, they're nine and thirteen. So they're at that sort of age where they do get it and they check their friends' behaviour all the time. Um, but this absolutely does need to be shown in schools and other public places, I think, like people have mentioned. So really just want to say, you know, I'm happy to talk to you about how we can help you get this shown. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't, uh, I didn't manage to get to see it on Council Day, I know several people did. But it's a very, uh, it's a very good way of putting, putting it across. It wa- it was a very moving video actually, to, to see what, what. Uh, and, and I've seen, I've seen, um, I've seen something on the TV, uh, uh, about calling it out. I don't know if anybody, any of you have seen it, but there is, there's an advert going on the TV that very often comes up and it's, you know, someone's doing a wolf whistle, so someone's calling it out, you know, it says, call it, you know, and that kind of thing. And, and also we discussed this at our last Police and Crime Panel meeting, because I sit on the Police and Crime Panel. And we were talking about crimes against girls and women, uh, and, uh, and, and all this sort of, you know, and, and it all starts, as you say, from a very early age. So I just want to reinforce what everybody else has said really. It does really need to go to youth clubs, schools, uh, sports venues, anywhere like that, anywhere we can get it out, and especially on the, in the local area committees, that would be brilliant. Thank you, Chair.
Could I just ask, I just say thank you to everyone for your comments and your thanks. Could I just ask for a round of applause for the two people here, please, for the video? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any other questions or comments? Because I've got one if nobody else. Um, yeah, again, fantastic, well done. Um, but my question is, have you shown it to your contempor- your male contemporaries and what responses did you get from them?
I showed it to my male cousins who are very like, have always been like a fatherly figure to me. And when they've seen it, they were like, this is what they see on a day to day with their friends all the time, like. At all, it's, it's almost become normalised, like, did it have like a shock in their face or anything? And I was like, okay, but why is this normalised? It's, it's a crime, it's wrong. And when they were telling me, when they were talk, when we were talking about it, they were like, uh, one of my eldest ones, he was like, yeah, he's seen it happen with a girl. And because of, he was of his friends and everything, he actually, he didn't have, like, the power to say anything. Until this day, he regrets it. But yeah, it's, it, it, it shows how something so, so bad and so negative, it impacts all the females, all the people in Sheffield, is so normalised. It's just, it, it's still shocking, but it's something small with this film. It's only a part of a bigger movement which we want to undertake, but yeah.
Thank you very much. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, so a lot of my male cadet friends, um, they viewed it. Um, and they, like you said, it was normalised. And it isn't till they came to me, they're like, you were in the video, I'm like, yes, I was in the video. Um, and they came to me and they wanted to discuss it because they didn't quite understand how big of an issue it was. They were like, why is it filmed like? Because this happens daily. And they didn't understand that in the same way until you talked for it. And that is why it is so impressive, important, it goes to schools and it is talked about, and it's fully gone into depth about what's going on. Because they were sat there going, so, so you fake phone calls? Yes, because we don't feel safe. Um, and they started to understand that more, and they started to feel that they then also had a job to make girls feel safe and to correct their behaviours and to make sure that their female friends don't ever have to feel anything like that again.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I mean, thanks for the comments and questions. I think there's unanimous support for this and, um, applause. Two things. Firstly, if I may, I'd like to invite you back next year to hear how it's gone, to see if you've achieved what you, you wanted to do and get some feedback there. And I think also as a committee, but also a council, we need to do the most we can to get this out. This, this is too good to be seen by too few people. It needs to get out to everybody. So thank you for coming in today. Thank you for your video and have a good Christmas. Okay, item nine on our agenda today is mortemly close resurfacing. Uh, I'm going to, procedure here is I'm going to ask Ruth Bell, the officer, to read the report. And then before we have questions and comments, I'm going to go into private session for some confidential information, where we can have questions, reports. We will then come back in to the public sector, public session for members' questions and comments. Ruth.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just to say that I'm here presenting on behalf of Tammy Barras, who unfortunately is poorly today. Um, it, it's a relatively short report, so in order to make sure that I do justice to it, I'm, I'm going to suggest that I read it in full, if that's okay. Um, so during the construction of the Thorncliff Football Development in 2015, the council required the use of mortemly close for construction traffic access. As part of the pan- planning consultation process, the council were required to write to all the residents on mortemly close, informing them of the proposed use. The letter included a commitment to resurface the road when the development work was completed, and you've all got that as appendix one in the report. At the time of writing to local residents, officers were of the opinion that the road was already in a poor state of repair and that the use by construction traffic was likely to cause further damage. However, due to the fact that some construction traffic accessed the site from Packhorse Lane and the fact that the proposed removal of soil from the site didn't happen, considerably less construction traffic used mortemly close than was first envisaged. An assessment of the road surface after the redevelopment did not identify further deterioration. And for these reasons, officers at the time took the decision not to progress the work to resurface mortemly close. Unfortunately, at that point, there was no communication with residents to advise them of the change to the original plans. And this has led to the council receiving multiple questions from a range of sources, including in writing and at a range of public meetings, including but not exclusively, um, co-op exec, full council and local area committees. Uh, with residents and local groups expressing frustration about the lack of communication and transparency regarding the decision not to progress with the work. The following concerns were raised by local residents. The original letter did not state to what level of disrepair the road should be in before the council resurfaced. The letter stated that the road would simply be resurfaced on completion of the works. Given unadopted small residential roads are designed for light usage, how can anyone argue that large construction vehicles would not contribute to medium and long term degradation of the highway? The number, number of vehicles that continually use mortemly close for access to the newly constructed football pitches is contributing to the wear and tear of the road. The road is not an access road or a car park to these facilities, and residents suggest measures be put in place to reduce the number of vehicles accessing them via mortemly close. The road is the only access to Thorncliff Community Sports Bar, which can result in higher than normal traffic usage, especially on an evening or weekend as they have football teams playing on the football pitches. And the road is the only access to the BT Exchange Centre where all BT and other utility vehicles are housed, meaning the road is constantly used by them. Although the resurfacing works have not yet taken place, no formal decision to not carry out the works has been made, and a budget of sixteen thousand five hundred pounds is still available as part of the original capital project to develop the Thorncliff Football Hub. This budget could still be used to make improvements to the road surface at mortemly close. This money is already allocated to the project and is not new money. Officers have obtained a quote of sixteen thousand seven hundred pounds to carry out repair work to mortemly close. And given the circumstances, a steer is now supposed sought from this committee on how to progress this matter. However, the officer recommendation is now to carry out the resurfacing as originally planned. And I'll just go to the recommendations and read those out in full, if that's okay. So the recommendations are that members of the Communities Parks and Leisure Committee note the content of the report and agree to uphold the original decision and progress the resurfacing work to mortemly close. And note that the road will continue to be an unadopted highway and that the council will not take on any further responsibility for future maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, uh, as previously, um, described, I'd like now, like to now go into private session to discuss some confidential matters, and that means, as previously said, the exclusion of the public, um, and for the webcam to be turned off. Um, we will come back to this for questions and comments from the members, and somebody will come and get you. Uh, it shouldn't take that long. Thank you. Um, we're now going to ask for questions and comments from the members, but before I do so, I received earlier today, just before the meeting, a few questions from a gentleman called Andy Adams. I don't know if he's here today, not referring to this. And given we want to be as transparent as possible, I'm going to direct these to the officer. Um, the third one actually is very straightforward because it's, it talks about adoption of the road, and that isn't the remit of this committee. That's, that's a highways decision. So in fact, I, I won't even raise that one because it doesn't need to be raised. But the first question is, and this is a, a response to Tammy Barras from an email she sent to the gentleman. In your email, you state the recommendation to the committee is the repair resurfacing of the roads should be progressed. Report and original letter do not mention anything about repairing the road and the difference between a road repair and resurfacing is significantly different. Please could you confirm the road with resurfacing line with original letter and the report?
Sorry, I was just turning to the, to the page that I got on this. Um, so the information I have on this is that, um, a survey has been done on the road. Um, high, highway officers have been looked at what is needed. And what is being proposed is resurfacing those sections that has been, that have been identified as needing it at this stage.
The second quiz question is, can you confirm a stationary road safety audit will take place following the resurfacing of the road?
I don't know what that is, but I'll certainly go away and ask the question if that's okay.
Thank you. Um, questions in any particular order? I'll take Karen first.
Uh, yeah, it's just the quote that we've had for, what was it, sixteen thousand? Um, is that for the whole road resurfacing or is that for the parts that need, need to work undertaking on them, please?
Um, I'm told it's to resurface the sections that need it.
Sue.
Thank you, Chair. I think we're all sitting here waiting for each other. Um, so as I, my understanding from this is that what we have here is a situation where residents were promised something because of a development. The actual damage that they thought was going to occur, the reason why the resurfacing was promised, actually didn't really seem to happen because it wasn't used in the way that, that, that it was used. Um, and yet we'd promised to repair a road which isn't actually the council's responsibility as it's an unadopted road. This is obviously, could be an issue in many other places, given that we have a number, a quite a large number, I think, of unadopted roads across the city. So, uh, my first question is, has any learning taken place from this to make sure that we don't end up in this sort of difficult situation again, where we're making promises without being clear about the where, whys and wherefores in those letters? Thank you.
Um, in response to the learning point, um, I'll commit to taking that away and making sure that it's fed into our, um, our projects team so that when we do projects going forward, that if we make commitments, we do either abide by them if that's what's necessary, or if we're not going to, that we do communicate with residents, um, in an appropriate and timely way.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you. Um, I mean, looking at the facts, it seems to me entirely proportionate to decide not to carry out the works. Um, based on the length of time that's elapsed and that there wasn't any further damage to the surface, and it's an unadopted highway. Um, the letter does clearly state that our construction traffic will increase its wear and tear more than usual, which it didn't. The letter was written in November twenty fifteen, so it's over seven years old. Um, I feel that given the difficult financial position that the council's in now, in twenty twenty two, spending money on an unadopted highway just doesn't, doesn't seem appropriate. Um, I understand that the money's already been allocated, sixteen thousand five hundred, but that's not to say that it couldn't be actually put to a better use for actual council services. Um, so my question is, how recently was that quote obtained, the sixteen thousand seven hundred, please?
I believe that quote has been obtained certainly since February this year, so, so within the, the sort of last ten months. We, we believe that that is an accurate, up to date quote for the, for the works that are, that we are proposing.
Karen.
Just leading on, just, why has it taken seven years? It's just a, a quick question.
I'm, I'm afraid I don't have an answer. Um, it, it, a decision was taken locally to not, to not do it because it was felt that the, the, the reason it had been promised hadn't come to bear. So it wasn't you, the, the road wasn't used for construction traffic in the way that it was thought it was going to be. Um, residents have obviously raised this, um, and it, it's been recognised that a formal decision to overturn what was agreed to in that letter was never taken. That's why we're here today.
Can I just come back and say, when did residents start raising it? Do you know that? No. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, I'm concerned about the cost. I know that gravel and construction material is rocketing every minute basically. When I go into Builders Merchant and ask for a price for sand, they say, we'll be sorry, we can't get it at the moment, we've got to wait. And when it does come, they give me a price that's far, far too high. I just feel that we could be committing the council to a huge cost. I know that many projects that have gone through the local area committee process are grinding to a halt because the original quote that was given is going up all the time. And even a delay of say a month will mean that a project could go from £60,000 to £100,000. And I just feel at the moment that we're not in a position to, you know, make that a legitimate expenditure. And also bearing in mind, as was said earlier, the financial position the council is in having to choose between, you know, very, very difficult priorities. So I would, I'm not happy with that.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Can I just ask, when we've been contacted as a council about this, how many households are affected and what proportion of them have come forward to request that? And also, I noticed in the report, there are comments about requests for measures to reduce the number of vehicles. And, yeah, to sort of, I don't know whether it was restriction on parking or something anyway. So basically, to make it, I suppose, less used by people accessing it now. I'm assuming that there's nothing included in that, in this proposal?
In answer to your first question, I'm afraid I don't know, I can get that information and come back to you regarding how many households and also what proportion of those have been in contact regarding their views on resurfacing the road. The proposal in this report is to resurface sections of the highway in response to the letter that was sent out. There's nothing being proposed with regard to changing access to the road and what it can and cannot be used for.
Yes, should this be given, well, if we're sort of stalled on this, I would very much like a site visit because I can't see the, I haven't looked at the context of the road. It may be going through an area that's very boggy or, you know, there are other issues there that we've not seen.
Are you anticipating asking a question, Paul?
Thank you Chair, I believe we should accept that we did make a promise if you go to Mortimer Close, you can see the areas around Thibon and entrance to the sports bar area at worst affected areas, we should do repairs up to the view of money allocated. There's very good views on Google Maps.
That's a good point, thank you. I think we've run the course on this one. I'm going to suggest we go to a vote for the recommendation, which I shall read out so there's no misunderstanding. The recommendations are that members of the Communities Parks and Leisure Committee note the content of the report and agree to uphold the original decision and progress the resurfacing stroke repair work to Mortimer Close. Note that the road will continue to be an unadopted highway and the council will not take on any further responsibility for future maintenance. On that basis, are we all agreed? Or if any member wishes dissent, please raise their hand. Okay, that's noted. In that case, we shall go to a vote. Votes for the recommendation. And votes against? Abstentions? And as Chair, I will not vote. So that is carried by five votes to two. Thank you very much. That concludes the agenda today. Thank you for your time, thank you to the officers. I believe there is a governance meeting to take place shortly for members of this committee to put their views. Okay.
Sorry Chair, I believe that the officer who's leading that may not be here till four o'clock, unless somebody could quickly text them and tell.
You know where that is? Here, okay. So it'd be good if you could stop, but I understand that we're all busy people and we might not have the spare time. So just really to say thank you for your work this year, since May, wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, have a good break and see you, see you in the new year. Thank you very much.